Can we count down from five?
Please.
Four, three, two, one.
I've called over the county board of commissioners August 4, 2025. Dennis, would you lead us in prayer?
Lord, we are grateful to you for another day that you present and all the opportunities that are contained within it. The Lord is, we gather here to conduct the business of this county and to deal with issues regarding the citizenry. We pray for wisdom, discernment, that everything we say and do would be honorable and be aligned to you and benefit all those involved. And we give you thanks for all that you provide us with every day. Christy. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need to amend the agenda, so I need a motion to amend the agenda at 3.6 proposed session.
So move that we, 3.6 add closed session to the agenda.
Yes, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move to 3.2, call for a order formal session, proclamation of words we have known. And we'll move to 3.2D, public comments. Before we do it, let me read this. The time limit for any comment to the board is three minutes. Board members are not expected to comment or take any action on matters during public comments. Any individual speaking during public comment shall address the entire board. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. If you have any questions about public comment, copies of public comment files are on the table with the sign up sheet. If you would like to speak to an agenda item or speak during public comment, you may sign up on the sheets at the door. Time limit to speak on an agenda item is also three minutes. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Two, one. Okay. We'll move on to 3.2D, board appointments. And we need to appoint a NCACC voting delegate. The NCACC conference will be held in Pitt County, August 21st through the 23rd, 2025. During the business session on Saturday, August 23rd, 2025, each county will be entitled to one vote on items that come before the membership. Each county should designate one voting delegate for the NCACC conference. So I need a...
An on my...
Yes. I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, we'll move on to 3.2D, two Avery Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. And we need, we have an application by Ms. Lauren Ware has applied to Avery Parks and Recreation Committee. The application has been approved, so I need a motion to appoint Lauren Ware on the Avery Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to 3.3, county commissioner's staff items. A is subdivision approval, 1911 at Cranberry Phase Four.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I'm here to present 1911 Cranberry Phase Four. This has been through all the preliminary finals for the Avery County Planning Board, meets all requirements per them. And this is probably, there's one more phase in this particular tract of land that'll be coming after this one, and then I'll wrap that particular tract up. So, any questions?
Backing questions. We need a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, board. I need to get a signature on that, please.
You're wearing a t-shirt, so I may get out of here. Thank you. 3.3B, Via Health Updates, for this to board.
All right, well, good evening. Thanks for having me. As you know, we try to come by all of our 32 counties. We try to do that quarterly, but I think since the hurricane, it's been a challenge. And I think you guys have moved your time, and it does make it a little difficult. But thanks for your time today, and I'll be quick. I think you got your packets in there with all this information, so I won't go over it in detail, but I kind of will hit the highlights. So, I think most of you all know who Via Health is, but we are a public managed care organization that prioritizes whole person health. And so, we really manage the Medicaid, so the federal, state, and local funding to connect people that we serve with healthcare services and support. Biggest thing to know is Taylor Plan is what VIA became July 1 of last year, and so we're operating as a Taylor Plan for about a little over a year now. But we also operate what's called Medicaid Direct and state funds. And so, there's more information on that if you want to dive into the weeds on your slides. The next one is VIA by the numbers, so I've included a slide specific to Avery County that shows your Medicaid membership as of June 10 of this year. So, Avery County Medicaid Direct, you have 683 people with that, the VIA majors in this county. And in Taylor Plan, you have 312 individuals, so a total between the two of 995, right out of 1,000. And that does not include the state funds that would also cover crisis services, things like that. And so, just as a reminder, what we do is we take all the funding from the state funds, and we funnel it into our comprehensive provider, which is Daymark in this area. And they basically see everybody who walks in the door. And so, that's the way for us to take that small pot of money and be able to see as many people as we can and pay for those services. Looking at the next slide, just some general updates. I think the biggest thing to know is, I think you guys are probably aware of the general assembly budget, still kind of up in the air, and it's not something we're not used to. However, there are some highlights I just want to note that will impact some things that's happening. One is the Healthy Opportunities Pilot. As you guys know, Avery County was in that original piece that started that pilot, and that funding got ceased, I think on July 1, due to some things happening with the federal level. There's no new Innovations waiver slots, and so if you know what Innovations waiver slot is, the catalog of services for somebody who's got intellectual, developmental disabilities. And so, people are on what's called the Registry of Unmet Needs, sometimes for several years, some up to 10. And so, those slots are, you know, very sought after, and there's just so many of the state level ones. So, they try to spread them out by region. We try to make sure every county's at least got one, so again, they are limited. And so, there's not going to be any new ones this year. In the proposed budget, now, it's not the final budget. The others, the TBI waiver slots for proposed expansion. TBI stands for traumatic brain injury, just so you guys are aware. And then, again, proposed single string fundings, reductions in the House, we got 30 million, and the Senate 15 million, and so 30 million statewide would mean VIA Health would be reducing our funds by approximately 6 million. So, and that's really not from administrative standpoint, that's for services that we're able to pay for. So, we're just continuing to watch that and how that may impact our counties. And so, next slide, just some of the Healthy Opportunities Pilot challenges. I won't go into the details here, but again, just to make sure you guys are aware that the HOP, also called HOP services, have ended, and not sure what the future of HOP looks like. The next one on the slide is the Child and Family Specialty Plan, something that I think I've talked about for probably three years now. Over the past couple of years, I appreciate you guys having letters of support that you guys give VIA to continue to serve that population. But ultimately, the state decided in the last budget cycle to have that carved out from Taylor Plan into its own, basically, plan. And what that means is foster care kids who are being served by VIA today, as of December 1, will be served by a statewide vendor, which is going to be Blue Cross. They're going to be serving all 100 counties. And so, we're working with Blue Cross for that transition to make sure that it can be as smooth as possible. And so, hopefully, Blue Cross is reaching out to your DSSs and things like that. So, you'll kind of see some implementation dates through the contract years of the first four contracts. Thank you.
We count down from five. Please. Four, three, two, one.
I've called over the county board of commissioners, August 4, 2025. Dennis, would you lead us in prayer?
Lord, we are grateful to you for another day that you present and all the opportunities that are contained within it. The Lord is, we gather here to conduct the business of this county and to deal with issues regarding the citizenry. We pray for wisdom, discernment, that everything we say and do would be honorable and be aligned to you and benefit all those involved. And we give you thanks for all that you provide us with every day. Christy. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need to amend the agenda, so I need a motion to amend the agenda at 3.6 proposed session.
So move that we, 3.6 add closed session to the agenda.
Yes, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move to 3.2, call for a order formal session, proclamation of words we have known. And we'll move to 3.2D, public comments. Before we do it, let me read this. The time limit for any comment to the board is three minutes. Board members are not expected to comment or take any action on matters during public comments. Any individual speaking during public comment shall address the entire board. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. If you have any questions about public comment, copies of public comment files are on the table with the sign up sheet. If you would like to speak to an agenda item or speak during public comment, you may sign up on the sheets at the door. Time limit to speak on an agenda item is also three minutes. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Two, one. Okay. We'll move on to, I better be moving, to 3.2D, board appointments. And we need to appoint a NCACC voting delegate. The NCACC conference will be held in Pitt County, August 21st through the 23rd, 2025. During the business session on Saturday, August 23rd, 2025, each county will be entitled to one vote on items that come before the membership. Each county should designate one voting delegate for the NCACC conference. So I need a...
An on my...
Yes. I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, we'll move on to 3.2D, two Avery Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. And we need, we have an application by Ms. Lauren Ware has applied to Avery Parks and Recreation Committee. The application has been approved, so I need a motion to appoint Lauren Ware on the Avery Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to 3.3, county commissioner's staff items. A is subdivision approval, 1911 at Cranberry Phase Four.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I'm here to present 1911 Cranberry Phase Four. This has been through all the preliminary finals for the Avery County Planning Board, meets all requirements per them. And this is probably, there's one more phase in this particular tract of land that'll be coming after this one, and then I'll wrap that particular tract up. So, any questions?
Backing questions. We need a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, board. I need to get a signature on that, please.
You're wearing a t-shirt, so I may get out of here. Thank you. 3.3B, Via Health Updates, for this to board.
All right, well, good evening. Thanks for having me. As you know, we try to come by all of our 32 counties. We try to do that quarterly, but I think since the hurricane, it's been a challenge. And I think you guys have moved your time, and it does make it a little difficult. But thanks for your time today, and I'll be quick. I think you got your packets in there with all this information, so I won't go over it in detail, but I kind of will hit the highlights. So, I think most of you all know who Via Health is, but we are a public managed care organization that prioritizes whole person health. And so, we really manage the Medicaid, so the federal, state, and local funding to connect people that we serve with healthcare services and support. Biggest thing to know is Taylor Plan is what VIA became July 1 of last year, and so we're operating as a Taylor Plan for about a little over a year now. But we also operate what's called Medicaid Direct and state funds. And so, there's more information on that if you want to dive into the weeds on your slides. The next one is VIA by the numbers, so I've included a slide specific to Avery County that shows your Medicaid membership as of June 10 of this year. So, Avery County Medicaid Direct, you have 683 people with that, the VIA majors in this county. And in Taylor Plan, you have 312 individuals, so a total between the two of 995, right out of 1,000. And that does not include the state funds that would also cover crisis services, things like that. And so, just as a reminder, what we do is we take all the funding from the state funds, and we funnel it into our comprehensive provider, which is Daymark in this area. And they basically see everybody who walks in the door. And so, that's the way for us to take that small pot of money and be able to see as many people as we can and pay for those services. Looking at the next slide, just some general updates. I think the biggest thing to know is, I think you guys are probably aware of the general assembly budget, still kind of up in the air, and it's not something we're not used to. However, there are some highlights I just want to note that will impact some things that's happening. One is the Healthy Opportunities Pilot. As you guys know, Avery County was in that original piece that started that pilot, and that funding got ceased, I think on July 1, due to some things happening with the federal level. There's no new Innovations waiver slots, and so if you know what Innovations waiver slot is, the catalog of services for somebody who's got intellectual, developmental disabilities. And so, people are on what's called the Registry of Unmet Needs, sometimes for several years, some up to 10. And so, those slots are, you know, very sought after, and there's just so many of the state level ones. So, they try to spread them out by region. We try to make sure every county's at least got one, so again, they are limited. And so, there's not going to be any new ones this year. In the proposed budget, now, it's not the final budget. The others, the TBI waiver slots for proposed expansion. TBI stands for traumatic brain injury, just so you guys are aware. And then, again, proposed single string fundings, reductions in the House, we got 30 million, and the Senate 15 million, and so 30 million statewide would mean VIA Health would be reducing our funds by approximately 6 million. So, and that's really not from an administrative standpoint, that's for services that we're able to pay for. So, we're just continuing to watch that and how that may impact our counties. And so, next slide, just some of the Healthy Opportunities Pilot challenges. I won't go into the details here, but again, just to make sure you guys are aware that the HOP, also called HOP services, have ended, and not sure what the future of HOP looks like. The next one on the slide is the Child and Family Specialty Plan, something that I think I've talked about for probably three years now. Over the past couple of years, I appreciate you guys having letters of support that you guys give VIA to continue to serve that population. But ultimately, the state decided in the last budget cycle to have that carved out from Taylor Plan into its own, basically, plan. And what that means is foster care kids who are being served by VIA today, as of December 1, will be served by a statewide vendor, which is going to be Blue Cross. They're going to be serving all 100 counties. And so, we're working with Blue Cross for that transition to make sure that it can be as smooth as possible. And so, hopefully, Blue Cross is reaching out to your DSSs and things like that. So, you'll kind of see some implementation dates through the contract years of the first four contracts.
All right, well, good evening, uh, thanks for having me. As you know, we try to come by all of our, uh, 32 counties. We try to do that quarterly, but I think since the hurricane, it's been a challenge. And I think you guys have moved your time and, uh, it does make it a little difficult. But thanks for your time today, and I'll be quick. Uh, I think you got your packets in there with all this information, so I won't go over, uh, in detail, but I kind of will hit the highlights. So I think most of you all know who Vaya Health is, um, but we are a public managed care organization that prioritizes whole person health. And so we really manage the Medicaid, uh, so the federal, state, and local funding to connect people that we serve with healthcare services and support. Biggest thing to know is Taylor Plan is, uh, what Vaya became July 1 of last year. And so we're operating as a Taylor Plan for about a little over a year now. Uh, but we also operate what's called Medicaid Direct and state funds. And so there's more information on that if you want to dive into the weeds on your slides. Um, the next one is Vaya by the numbers. So I've included a slide specific to Avery County that shows your Medicaid membership, uh, as of June 10th of this year. So Avery County Medicaid Direct, you have 683 people with, uh, that, the volume ages in this county. And in Taylor Plan, you have 312 individuals. So a total between the two of 995, right out of 1,000. Um, and that does not include the state funds that would also cover crisis services, things like that. And so just as a reminder, what we do is we take all the, the funding from the state funds and we funnel into our comprehensive provider, which is Daymark in this area. And they basically see everybody who walks in the door. And so that's the way for us to take that small pot of money and be able to see as many people as we can and pay for those services. Uh, looking at the next slide, just some general updates. Uh, I think the biggest thing to know is, I think you guys are probably aware of the General Assembly Budget, uh, still kind of up in the air. And it's not something we're not used to. Um, however, there are some, uh, some highlights I just want to note that will impact, uh, some things that's happening. One is the Healthy Opportunities Pilot. Uh, as you guys know, Avery County was in that original piece that started that pilot. And that funding got ceased, I think on July 1, um, due to some things happening with the federal level. Um, there's no new Innovations waiver slots. And so if you know what Innovations waiver slot is, the catalog of services for somebody who's got intellectual, developmental disabilities. And so people are on what's called the Registry of Unmet Needs, sometimes for several years, uh, some, some up to 10. And so those slots are, you know, very sought after, and there's just so many of the state level ones. So they try to spread them out, uh, by region. We try to make sure every county's at least got one. So, uh, again, they are limited. And so there's, there's not going to be any new ones this year. Um, in the proposed budget, now it's not the final budget. The others, the TBI waiver slots, uh, for proposed expansion. TBI stands for traumatic brain injury, just so you guys are aware. And then, again, proposed single string fundings, uh, reductions in the House. We got 30 million in the Senate, 15 million. And so 30 million statewide would mean Vaya Health would be reducing our funds by approximately 6 million. So, um, and that's really not from administrative standpoint, that's for services that we're able to pay for. Uh, so we're just continuing to watch that, uh, and how that may impact, uh, our counties. And so next slide, just some of the Healthy Opportunities Pilot challenges. I won't go into the details here, but again, just to make sure you guys are aware that the HOP, also called HOP Services, uh, have ended. And not sure what the future of HOP looks like. The next one on the slide, uh, is the Child and Family Specialty Plan, something that I think I've talked about for probably three years now. Uh, over the past couple of years, I, I appreciate you guys having letters of support as you guys give Vaya to continue to, to serve that population. But ultimately, the state decided, uh, in the last budget cycle to have that carved out, uh, from Taylor Plan into its own basically plan. And, uh, what that means is foster care kids who are being served by Vaya today, as of December 1, will be served by a statewide vendor, which is going to be Blue Cross. Um, they're going to be serving all 100 counties. And so we're working with Blue Cross for that transition to make sure that it can be as smooth as possible. Um, and so hopefully, Blue Cross is reaching out to your DSSs and things like that, so. But you'll kind of see some implementation dates, uh, through the contract years of the first four contracts and that. Um, and then moving over, again, I know I talked a little bit about the hurricane, uh, just as a look back, kind of, you know, all that we're still kind of in recovery, I think across all of, of the west North Carolina in some ways. But there's this thing called Hope for NC Grant that Vaya coordinates with. We have hired several employees that basically will kind of help residents understand what resources are still available for the affected communities. I think 22 of our 25 impacted counties, uh, in North Carolina, West Carolina are receiving the Hope for NC. Um, and so there's some more information there, including the helpline. Uh, if you guys run across any residents that have some questions about it, we have a whole team of people who are out in the community going around and, and trying to help people in this recovery process. Last couple of things, just wanted to, to show you guys and just provide a little bit of data, um, is what, what kind of, I think the first one is, uh, the distinct members that, that we're serving under Taylor Plan by age group. And you can see adults being the largest in behavioral health at 150. Um, transitional youth, that's that age 17 to 24 comes in second. And then child and adolescent kind of round that out on the behavioral health side. On the physical health side, uh, it is the same, all those same numbers, uh, because, and now Taylor Plan is both physical health and behavioral, whereas in the past it wasn't, it was separate. Um, next slide, you can kind of see the highest volume of behavioral health services. Uh, the service itself is outpatient individual therapy and then tailored care management. Everybody under Vaya Taylor Plan does get tailored care management, but the person can choose for it to not be, because we have providers also doing tailored care management. So just wanted to note that. Um, and then also, you can kind of just see some of the other things, uh, of volume of who the people are seeing. Physician being number one, outpatient hospital on the physical health side being number two. And then lastly, the largest provider, uh, that our members are seeing in your county is Daymark at 103. And then Cannon and App Regional, kind of round that out with the next two. So, again, I just wanted to share some of that information. Uh, and if you guys have any questions, certainly we would take those or whatever you'd like to, to do.
If I have a question.
All right. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, John.
Absolutely.
Move to 3.3C, Resolutions Authorizing Antecidative Process. And you want to let Michelle explain that?
Uh, there is an offer made on a piece of property that the county has declared a surplus property. Um, and the county can choose to accept this offer. The offer is for $8,000 for this lot located off of Florida Avenue. The process is that the board, which is to accept that, the board would accept it. And then there would be a notice that would be published in the newspaper, giving, uh, any member of the public the opportunity to come in and file an upset bid at 10 days from the day the notice first runs in the paper, to file an upset bid. And then upset bids would continue, uh, in 10-day periods until you have 10 days that pass with no upset bids. So, uh, that's what the resolution is that's in front of the board, is to authorize, uh, accepting the offer for $8,000 for the sale of that lot. And then it would follow the upset bid process.
So we'll need a motion to adopt this resolution?
Yes.
Need a motion to adopt the resolution?
So move. Adopt the resolution as presented?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll move to Tax Administration's report, this is a recovery deal.
Good evening. Um, please approve our total monthly, um, collections for July, 112,835.44.
Need a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have one release of $2,602.89. And this is actually a holdover from four years ago that just slipped through the cracks somewhere and has crawled back out.
Need a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then our sales for the month of July were 64, and we're at 66%. Last year we had 85, and we're at 64%. And I think that's all I have left.
Come to me. We'll move to 3.3E, Resolution to Amend the Avery County tipping fee ordinance. And Michelle, I think you're up to me.
And this is, uh, county has a tipping fee ordinance, uh, that pertains to, uh, the fees that are charged, uh, by the solid waste department. Um, the ordinance was enacted in 1998, I believe it was, uh, which set the fee at that time. Uh, this, uh, amendment is to change, um, a few minor things in the ordinance and to establish that the tipping fee would be $62 per ton instead of what we would set forth, uh, in the previous, uh, version of the ordinance. And then the, uh, so I would need, uh, the board to, uh, approve amending the tipping fee ordinance. Um, and this will require two votes by the board. So it will have to be voted on again next month.
Two, six, two dollars?
Raising it to $62 a ton. It requires two votes by the board because it's not a full board. So if the full board were present and it was unanimous vote, then it would just be one vote. But since it's less than a full board voting on it, it requires two votes.
So, question.
Okay. So the, uh, the language in the ordinance, it also eliminates the language, uh, for the credits for the municipal, uh, users. That was in Article 4 for the set forth of the tipping fee. And so that language has been eliminated as well. And Eric has reviewed it, uh, and I think it was satisfactory to what.
Yes.
What he had, uh, wanted to see in the ordinance.
I think that was my, that was my question, Pini, is, did this also address that?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we need a, uh, motion to, uh, on the resolution to amend Avery County tipping fee.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that will come up in the council board.
We'll need it, it'll require a second, but.
So we move on to 3.3F, Revision of Economic Development Advisory Committee Bylaws. Uh, and this is, uh, Avery County Economic Development Advisory Committee requests that the DOC approve a revision to the EDC bylaws. The revision is to change the monthly meetings to quarterly meetings. The meetings will occur in the months of January, April, July, and October of the last Tuesday of the month at 5:00 p.m. So I need, and that is in Section 6 of the bylaws, so, uh, I need a motion to approve the revision.
So move.
Say it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Move to 3.4, County Commissioner Report, your request, County Manager Report. So, Mr. Ca- Ms. County Manager, do you have anything to add?
Um, just, um, wanted to remind, or in your informational items is this, um, Avery County Day of Remembrance and Honor. It's, um, Saturday, September the 27th at 10:00 a.m. at the Avery Square. And it is to join us in recognizing the one-year anniversary of Hurricane Helene, as well as remembering and honoring the heroes who rose to the occasion during and after the storm. And let's come together as a community to reflect, pay tribute, and celebrate the resilience that carried us through. Together we are Avery. But, and that's, uh, Saturday, September 27th at 10:00 a.m. at the Avery Square. And then there's a, um, Avery County Roadshow this weekend, August 8th and 9th. Um, starts at 6 o'clock, concert starts at 6:30. You can get tickets online, I don't know where Christian, but that's this weekend up here. And then. So those are the two main things.
All right, that's all we got.
That's all.
Okay. Move to 3.82, Resolution to Descent of African Sage to NCM. And this is a, uh, a resolution that gives, uh, Phillip and Cindy, it will be the primary, Cindy the secondary on this, uh, uh, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and it gives him the right to sign all the documents. So, uh, I'll need a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll move to 3.4B, Finance Office Report, Ms. Jessica.
Yes, I have a few items for consideration this afternoon. Uh, item number one, the Department of Senior Services has received two grants, one from Dogwood and one from Sisters of Mercy, each for $27,000 for the purchase of a 15-passenger van. These funds were received in FY 24-25 and will need to be rolled over into the current fiscal year. Request the board to accept the grants and approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay $54,000 and credit fund balance appropriated $54,000.
Motion to approve.
Move to approve item one.
Say it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number two, the Department of Parks and Recreation has received a North Carolina Youth Sports Grant in the amount of $20,000 for the purchase of new sports equipment. Request the board to accept the grant and approve the following budget amendment to debit youth sports $20,000 and credit friends of youth, Friends of Avery County Parks and Rec, uh, $20,000.
Motion to approve.
So move for item two.
Say it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, the Avery County Sheriff's Office has received proceeds from the sale of a K-9 to the Wadog County Sheriff's Office. They're requesting that these funds be added back into their budget so that they can use these funds for their K-9 program. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay $20,000 and credit proceeds from sale of asset $20,000.
Need a motion to approve.
So move on to item three.
Say it. All in favor say aye.
Aye. I just still think it's funny, it's a proceed, proceed from sale of asset.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, we're talking about an animal. Item number four, the, the Transportation Department was not able to purchase vans that were budgeted in '23, '24, and '24, '25 budget due to availability. They're requesting that the money be rolled into the '25, '26 budget. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay vehicles $509,996 and credit fund balance appropriated $509,996. I will just make this note that it's a 90-10 county-state, uh, split. So the, the county would receive reimbursement from the state for 90% if we are able to purchase said vehicles in this current fiscal year.
Well, do we have any update on what the status of that is?
I, I tried to call Debbie and I wasn't able to get ahold of her to see like what they're saying the timeline is. But I think it's kind of the same, same old, same old. We, we may get the '23, '24 one, and then we're still behind date ball and others. So I'm hope, hopeful. I know in last year, Phillip and several went down and tried to talk to them to see what the holdup was. And I think it's the same process, so hopeful that we can get moving on that.
Need a motion to approve.
Prove, approve item four.
All in favor say aye.
Item number five, the Department of Central Dispatch is requesting funds to pay the High Country Council Governments for addressing work completed in FY 23-24. They've been waiting to hear from the NC E911 Board to see if E911 Funds could pay for this expense. They were notified that this is not an eligible E911 Fund expense. Request the board to approve the following budget amendment to debit maintenance contracts $11,452.50 and the credit fund balance appropriated, uh, $11,452.50.
Need a motion to approve.
Question, is that the, the, the whole year's expenditure?
Yes, that is the whole year's expenditure. And what, what kind of made this a little more complicated is the year prior, we had had it, and it was E911 eligible. But the, the nature of what Jessica's been doing has changed from, uh, center line, adding center lines to addressing. And it's, there's so many nuances in the E911, they'll cover this, they won't cover that. And as her, she's caught up and she's doing different kind of work now, now they're saying, well, that's not eligible, so.
I just want to be sure that was the, the entire.
Yes, that's all.
Move to approve item five.
Say it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number six, uh, E911, NCDIT has notified the Department of Central Dispatch, E911 Fund, a hotel stay for cyber security training was an ineligible expense for FY 23-24. This ineligible expense of $221.50 for fiscal year '23, '24 will have to be paid back to the E911 Fund. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to, uh, debit transfer to E911 Fund $221.50 and the credit fund balance appropriated $221.50. And to debit E911 Fund balance appropriation $221.50 and credit transfer E911 system $221.50.
Need a motion to approve.
Move your approve item six.
Say it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The EMS, uh, Department received a grant from the North Carolina Community Foundation, an amount of $30,000 to fund needs related to Hurricane Helene recovery in the FY 24-25 budget. These funds were not spent and will need to be moved forward into the current year budget. Request the board to approve the following budget amendment to debit EMS grants $30,000 and credit fund balance appropriated $30,000.
Motion to approve.
Move to approve item seven.
Say it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, this, uh, item number eight comes, is, uh, with two resolutions that we need to get approved, uh, before we do the item number eight, which is the amending our, our budget ordinance, project grant ordinance. The first resolution is a resolution by the Avery County Board of Commissioners authorizing execution of opioid settlement with secondary opioid manufacturers and approving the third supplemental agreement for additional funds between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioid litigation. Request the board to approve this resolution as presented.
Need a motion to approve resolution as presented.
So move.
Say it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and there's another one following, this is the actual outline for, uh, the expenditure for the '25, '26 year. A resolution by the Avery County, uh, County of Avery to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funds as presented in this resolution. Request the board to approve this resolution as presented.
And if I may interject for a moment, uh, just recently came to the board meeting in June, 2025, and indicated that she would have the agreements ready for the board's approval that would go with this resolution. But I don't know if those agreements have been, uh, presented, they haven't been approved by the board. So, I, I mean, no funds can be dispersed until those agreements are presented. So I don't know if any of those factors.
She had, me and Phillip met with her last week, and she's, she talked about MOUs, about getting, getting them signed, uh, after this, these resolutions and, uh, budget amendment was done, getting MOUs sent after the.
There can't be any funds dispersed then until there's a signed agreement by these, all these different entities.
Okay. Like she, all, all she talked to us about was the MOUs, is my understanding, that was going, she's going to send out as soon as this got approved and then get them signed.
The processes are freezing together.
Okay.
We've approved releasing the funds when the board was presented with the signed agreement saying that the provider is going to follow the rules of the opioid settlement.
Could the board?
So I'm not sure that this is, we had to agreements from the provider. So I'm not sure that this is, we had the agreements from the providers saying that they're going to follow, you know, this process of the process and the opioid funds. So that would be the, the thing I, I'd like to see.
Okay.
So should we table this to the next?
I mean, I think I would go ahead and, and table it until, you don't know if the people are going to follow the rules until then, they, they're presenting the agreements and sign them.
Right. Okay.
I would move to table this until the next commissioner meeting.
We can always, if it's something that needs to be done before our next meeting in September, we can always have a special meeting and approve those and then approve the resolution.
I'll tell, and you know, I, I think my understanding from Sarah is, you know, some of these people are, they're already doing these programs and they're just seeking, you know, some reimbursement back on some.
Yeah, I think it's just an initial, but I mean, they've provided the things since the last fiscal year.
Right.
But there are some.
There are millions, yes.
There are these.
The other one is six this time, so. Well, Dennis has made a motion to table it till further.
Just table it till.
Further information or whatever.
It will be, agreements, memorandums of understanding are received.
Okay, and you'll say that, Rob?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
All right, so you also table the corresponding amendment, I suppose, then as well. I remember it, okay.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Move to three point four, State County Attorney Report.
I do not have anything that the board needs to address in the session. I do have something to discuss with the board when you get to closed session.
Okay, let's move to three point six, closed session, attorney-client privilege.
Yes, I do have something to address with the board in the closed session. It would pertain to attorney-client privilege and contract negotiations and potential litigation.
I need a motion to move into closed session.
So move.
Say it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.